Okay, I'm ready. Okay, we're ready.
It's not that.
Good afternoon, colleagues and audience members. My name is Ed Riceing. I am the chairman of the Land Use and Transportation Committee. We are here this afternoon to conduct our fifth voting session on text amendments to City Council Bill 12 dash 0152, which is Transform Baltimore Zoning. Electronic files are being made available on the city council's website. Draft amendments can be downloaded from Bill 12, from Bill 12 dash 0152, the file page, by inputting the following link into your web browser, which is https backslash backslash Baltimore dot legisstar dot com. A copy of the draft amendments has also been placed in the bill folder located in the Executive Secretary's office, Natwana Austin. I encourage everyone to visit the city council's website to stay updated about the bill. The Land Use and Transportation Committee intends to work progressively through the drafts, amendments, page by page, and the committee will vote on it as much as we can during today's session. Public testimony will not be allowed during the voting session. City agencies may be questioned about particular amendments being discussed by the committee. We are joined by my, by the council members. To my far left in the center is the dean of the council, councilwoman Ricky Spector.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
To her right is Councilman Nick Mosby.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
To Councilman Mosby's right is Councilman Bill Henry. Of course, from Bill, Councilman Henry is Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark. Second to my left is Councilwoman Sharon Green Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
To my immediate left is Councilman Jim Craft, who is the vice chair of the committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We're also joined by Annie Smalling from the mayor's office. To his left is Angela Gibson, who is also representing. Page. To my right is Mr. Paul Plymouth, who's representing President Bernard Jack Young. To his left is Ms. Kara Kunst, who's representing President Bernard Jack Young. To my immediate right is Jennifer Coats, who is the, who is the staff person for Transform If you could please, one of my ground rules, would you please turn off your cell phones, smartphones, to give courtesy and respect to the committee members when it comes time for voting. We, we, yesterday's voting session, we are now on, we're on Title IV, and we are on T 265, which is page 78, line 3. And this is amendment from Councilwoman Mary Pat Clark. Councilwoman Clark?
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee, this is an amendment, as you said, page 78, line 3, actually. Sorry, I've just got to get into the swing here. Oh, simply this, "The Director of Planning must review the project in accordance with the procedure found in the site review manual as approved," and the amendment is, "as approved by the Planning Commission and posted on the Baltimore City website." Just to keep that clear, we're talking for, to generations of people to come.
Second. You have a second? Okay, moved by, moved by Councilwoman Clark, seconded by Councilman Henry. Councilwoman Riceinger votes no. Councilwoman Craft?
No.
Councilwoman Craft, no. Councilwoman Brants is absent. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark, yes. Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Henry, yes. Councilwoman Middleton?
No.
Councilwoman Middleton, no. Councilwoman Mosby?
She's not going to vote for anything.
Councilwoman Mosby, no. We have two yes, with four no's and one absent. The motion fails. Councilman Henry, yes.
Thank you. I'm sorry, if I could ask for the committee's indulgence. I withdrew an amendment yesterday by mistake, thinking it was a different amendment, and I wanted to ask if we could, if I could move for a reconsideration of the withdrawal of T 239.
Okay, what page?
It would be on page 74, line 8 through 23, and it was an amendment to include a provision that the Planning Commission study the zoning codes, comprehensive laws, and provide a one-year report on the code's implementation. I'd like to motion to reconsider and then defer that amendment for language rather than withdrawing it completely.
Okay.
So, move for reconsideration.
So, Councilman Henry makes a motion to defer. Do I have a second?
Well, I, can I, can I just defer instead of un-withdrawing it?
You want to move from withdrawal to defer?
I, pardon? I'll, I'll, you know what, I'll just submit another amendment at a future time with the language.
Okay.
Would that work?
Thank you, Council.
Okay, thank you. Good idea.
Thank you. We are now on, yes, T 266, Councilwoman.
I'm withdrawing this because the related amendment was defeated, so this becomes alprost.
Okay. So, you're ma, you're making a motion to...
I move to withdraw.
266. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor to withdraw, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. It's withdrawn. Now, we are on T 268.
I'm not going to get any Sharon's foot.
This is...
We, we can withdraw that, the agency's, I think that was redundant.
Okay. So, do I have a motion to withdraw?
No.
So, move by Councilman Henry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, my Councilwoman Craft. All those in favor to withdraw, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. T 268 is withdrawn. We are now on 260...
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. There was an amendment that I had submitted through the hearing process that has not ended up with a number or a designation, and I would like, if I may, to put it before the body. I do have it written up in my summaries of amendments that I handed out for this Title IV. I, with all the redundancies, this one just got lost. So, I'm calling it T XXX. I have it in all my paperwork that went into the committee, so if I may...
Yes.
I'll tell you what it says, and it's in my...
Well, before you begin, Councilwoman, make sure all the members have a copy. Do all of us have a copy of T XXX?
I don't. What? Fine. Where the heck is it?
It's in the packet from yesterday.
It's in the packet.
Where the heck is it?
It should be on your desk. So, does everyone have it?
I ju...
I have it.
You have it? Councilwoman Mosby, you have it?
T XXX, right? I got it. There?
You have it, Sharon? Sharon, you have it, yes?
Thank you.
She doesn't have it. She don't have it.
Councilwoman Middleton needs a copy.
Here's what it says.
Hold on for one second.
Oh, sure.
Argue my...
Does anyone need other copies of my amendments?
Councilwoman, I want to make sure everybody has one. Can you hold on for one second, please? Councilwoman Clark, go ahead.
Basically, this is a, right now, the draft of, the draft, the Planning Commission draft of this legislation says, "An applicant who is aggrieved by the final decision of the Director of Planning may appeal that decision to the Planning Commission." And I have added that an applicant or a business owner, property owner, or resident located within two blocks of the subject property who is aggrieved can appeal. In other words, giving rights of appeal to a planning, to a planning decision, a staff decision, rights to appeal to not just the, an applicant, but also to other interested parties. So, I'd be happy to entertain language, if you have, prefer it, that refers to non-applicant interested parties, but right now, I'm calling them business owners, property owners, or residents located within two blocks of the subject property.
Two blocks.
And I move this amendment.
Moved by Councilwoman Clark. Do I have a second?
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute. What does yours say?
We, there's a, you, do we have a second? No. Different section.
This is from Title V.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's, that, this is the one that's in Title IV. This is the one that's in Title IV.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
And he's reading Title V. It was another case of an amendment that didn't make it into the list.
Okay. Then I don't have that.
So, is there a second?
Basically...
Do we have a second?
Um, second.
Second, my Councilman Henry. Question on the motion, Councilwoman.
Yes. Councilwoman? Councilwoman?
We're still, excuse me?
Yeah. I have, I have a question about this. So, let me go to law first. So, we're, we're creating standing for everyone, everyone within two blocks of the subject property. We're saying that an applicant, a business owner, a property owner, or a resident within two blocks of a subject property has standing.
That's what the amendment seems to say. I think this is inconsistent with case law on what an aggrieved party usually is defined as.
Okay. So...
May I ask that we have some...
Well, let me, now, let me follow up, then. I'm just looking at a place like where we have a lot of stuff going on down in Harbor East, Fells Point, and we get two blocks, and where you have, where you have all these high rises, and you say, "Any resident or property owner," you're giving, you know, hundreds, if not thousands, of people the ability to be quote-unquote aggrieved under this. And I don't think anybody wants to give all those people the right to be quote-unquote aggrieved under this, because we certainly want people who are aggrieved, but we don't want someone who just wants to say, "Oh, you know, I don't like this."
Right. That's why I suggested you might have a, I'm happy to accept a narrower definition of a person's, of interest, but right now, the, the, the appeal is only with the applicant for, to the planning director. And if the planning director makes a decision that is contrary to the interests of an immediately affected party, then that immediately affected party should have the equal right to appeal. So, I guess it's a question of terminology, and I would like to find it, if you could help me.
Yeah. Councilwoman, I'll, I'll, regards to this amendment, which is a new amendment, and it wasn't discussed at a hearing, it's my understanding from the...
No, 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 no. It was.
It was discussed?
It was. It was just not put into the list.
It was discussed. It was discussed.
I, I have my papers that I've submitted. I have every paper submitted.
Okay. So, all right, I get it. As long as you say it was discussed.
It doesn't have a number, but it was there. It's been submitted.
It was discussed. So, okay. Councilman Henry? It's clarified. We're good. Councilman Henry? The motion was made. I want to hear. We got it open for discussion.
Well, this, yeah, this is what I was going to suggest, is that I have already asked for a deferral of an issue on page 72. There's reference in the code existing for the Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals giving notice of the hearing to the words, the parties in interest. And I've already asked for a deferral and received one to come up with a definition of parties in interest. So, what I would suggest is I would offer a friendly amendment here to, to amend it to an applicant or other parties in interest for now, and then that would defer, that would, that would kick the can down the road a little bit, and we can have a fight specifically on who are the parties in interest, because that really should be consistent for all of the different...
I agree.
...issues that we're going to be bringing before either the zoning board or the Planning Commission.
I'd be happy to accept that amendment, and I appreciate the reason for it, Sharon. So, can I move the second? With that amendment?
Just a point of clarification.
Make this an applicant or other parties in interest who is aggrieved by the final decision. We make this that, and then we'll, we still, but we still leave, we still have to define what...
Just a point of clarification, and I think this is consistent with the law department's. This would essentially be a negative appeal situation, because if you go back to the powers of the planning director, it's very limited to administrative authority, essentially the, you know, critical area, the, the technical review. And so, if you were, it would create a very dangerous, time-consuming, and, and difficult process, not to speak of the standing, if you created that negative appeal ability here on this essentially administrative function.
Okay. Law Department?
I'd just like, I'd just like to add that in the state enabling legislation, the Land Use article, it does say that given, you know, talks about the, the types of appeals that can be made, and it uses aggrieved party, which is a term that's defined in case law over the years. So, we have to be careful we're not running afoul of what the state law authorizes us to do.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry. What's the law department saying? We just have to be careful?
What I said was, there is state law that defines the appeal process for decisions of the Planning Commission to the board, and that, that authority that's granted allows for appeals by aggrieved parties, and that term has been defined in case law. So, we have to be careful when we draft our code that we are, are consistent with the powers that are granted to us under the state law.
He will help us with that.
Of course.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. We had a motion. We had a second discussion. Councilman, time for a vote. Councilwoman Riceinger votes no. Councilman Craft?
Question? Go ahead.
I, I'm not sure. Do you want this motion voted on now, or do you want to defer this to get the information from the law department?
I'd rather, I mean, if, I'd rather vote for it and, and get the...
Okay.
Okay.
The pressure was the answer.
All right. I'll defer.
Vote, vote as a motion. Craft, no. Brants is absent.
I'll defer until we get...
Councilwoman, motion was made, I mean, law department, the motion was made, it was second word of vote.
I talked to my second.
We can always, we can always come back if you want to reconsider.
Mr. Chair, can I withdraw?
Vote, then we'll go from here. Councilwoman Clark? Councilwoman Clark? Your vote?
We haven't voted on the amendment.
It's a friendly amendment.
It's a friendly amendment.
You accepted it.
So...
I accepted it.
Okay. So, Councilman Clark, yes. Councilman Henry?
Point, point of information, is it, are you saying that I cannot, in the middle of the vote, withdraw my second?
You can what?
I cannot, in the middle of the vote, withdraw my second?
I'll have to...
I'm just asking.
We'll have to get a decision on that, but I mean, you made the motion, you seconded it, so it's time for a vote. What I'm asking you is voting yes or no, and we could, she wants...
You know, I, I, okay, I vote yes.
Okay. Councilman Henry votes yes. Councilwoman Middleton?
No.
Councilwoman Middleton, no. Councilwoman Mosby? Councilwoman Mosby, no. We have two yes, with four no's and one absent. Motion fails.
I've got people who are voting no on everything, everything. Should all bring it back. I, I'm, yeah, I got, I'll put in a new amendment. When do I do that? All right, so Stephanie, we're coming back. Come back.
So, where are we at? We did this. I don't know why she walked out. We did this when this was...
We're on...
Okay. We are now on page, we are now on T 269. This is page 80, line 18. This is the planning department?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our amendment is to make, the purpose is to make clear that in our local historic districts governed by the Commission for Historical and Architectural Preservation, that they are exempt from design review under zoning as, because they need to go to that commission. And we would like that it would be on page 80, line 16. Development in local historic districts are exempt from design review of this code.
Got a question.
That was on our spreadsheet. If you need it to be in another form, I'll add it to what I was sending to the list to the president's office, but it is literally that one sentence. It's page 80, line 16.
Line, page 81.
It would be an insert between, after line 16, which says, "Development in local historic districts are exempt from design review of this code."
Before design review is required for the following types of development?
Exactly. And that is so that it's very clear there's no conflicting reviews, because if you're in a local historic district, that governs in terms of the exterior of the building.
Chap.
Chap. Yes.
I, I, I hope I'm not splitting a hair here, but wouldn't, wouldn't it be better to simply describe that properties that are developments that are being reviewed by the Commission on Historic and Architectural Preservation are exempt from this? Because I, I only say it that the way that your amendment is phrased...
Oh.
It implies that somebody could come to chap and say, "Well, we don't have to worry about your design review either, because we're in a historic district, and, and what we do is kind of..."
I think your wording is fine.
Yeah.
I'm comfortable. I mean, the goal, what the Planning Commission wanted to ensure is that there's not sort of a double conflicting review, and I think your wording is fine.
Councilwoman Craft?
Yeah. I mean, just for consistency, and I, I don't know whether this goes to Avery or what, but we have "Design review is required for the following types of development," and then we go through that, and then we'd say "Design review is not required for," you know, just to be consistent in the way it's drafted.
That's fine. It could be at the top of page 81, if that's, yeah.
Right. So, you say "Design review is required, design review is not required," so that you're consistent with the way it's put in.
Okay.
So, that would be page 81, line...
Between five and six.
But...
He moved it from 80 to 81, and it would be between line five and six, and I'm sorry, I didn't write down Councilman Henry's wording, but his phraseology is fine.
Councilwoman Spector?
Mr. Chair, Laurie, are all historic districts under the jurisdiction of chap?
Only local historic districts.
That's what I was...
Not national register.
So, that's, that's, that is...
I think that Councilman Henry's wording would cover that by saying, "If it is subject to chap, the review by chap." If it is subject to.
Okay.
And, and I think his wording would add land, local landmarks, which would be, may not be in districts. They would be standalone landmarks.
District of chap.
Yes. So, if it's within the jurisdiction of chap, yes.
Okay. Reviewed by the Commission on Historic and Architectural Preservation.
Okay.
Review by chap, right?
Okay.
Is this, is this a review amendment?
Yeah, I'll move this. Okay. All right. Okay, that is what, that's two...
265.
T 269.
Right.
Councilman Henry, you have your amendment, you would have...
I move the way that Councilman Craft...
Okay. Councilwoman Craft?
On page 81, between lines five and six, the language would read as follows, "Design review is not required for development projects reviewed by the Commission for Historic and Architectural Preservation."
Okay.
Okay? That'd be the amendment inserted on page 81, between lines five and six. Design review is not required for development projects reviewed by the Commission for Historical and Architectural Preservation.
You got that?
Yeah.
Okay. So, you could, second?
Second.
Okay. Move my Councilman Henry. Seconded by Councilman Craft. Councilwoman Riceinger votes yes. Councilwoman Craft?
Did you get that? Karen, did you get that? You got it? Okay.
Councilwoman Craft?
Yes.
Councilwoman Craft, yes. Councilman Brants?
I'm sorry, so, which one begin?
259. So far, so far on the vote, Councilman, I and Craft said yes. Well, now it's up to you. You need time to read it, or we would... What'd he say?
Councilmember...
What'd he say? Okay. All right. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark, yes. Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Henry, yes. Councilwoman Middleton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Middleton, yes. Councilwoman Mosby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mosby, yes.
And yes, Councilman Brant.
Councilman, Councilman Brants, yes. And we have seven yes. Motion passes. That was 269. Um, where?
Sharon.
Sharon, go ahead. Councilwoman?
No.
We are now on T 830. This is the planning department.
We need to defer this as it has to do with a signage matter and the law department's reviewing some of those issues.
Do I have a motion?
Motion defer.
Motion by Councilman Craft. Do I have a second for the, second by Councilwoman Middleton? All those in favor to defer, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Motion's deferred. We are now on T 270, also planning department. It's page 80?
Uh, yes, it's page 80, and it should be noted as line 25, and it is to substitute all exterior modifications with, to, in, in the district, to substantial rehabilitation of facade of the existing structure in the district of C5, and that is in order to match parallel... And that is in order to match parallel language in a later section.
Moved by Councilman Henry, second by Councilwoman Branch. Yes. Councilwoman Rice sing a vote, yes. Councilman Craft?
Yes.
Councilman Craft, yes. Councilman Branch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Branch is yes. Councilwoman Clark? Councilman Clark is yes. Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Henry is yes. Councilwoman Middleton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Middleton is yes. Councilman Mosby?
Yes.
Councilman Mosby is yes. That's seven yes. Motion passes. We're to T two seventy.
Uh, Mr. Chairman-
Yes, madam, yeah. Councilwoman Clark, go ahead.
I have, um, there are two amendments that are proposed by, by John Marrowan.
Yes.
And I think that, um, the second one is, um, I think they're, in the picture, and that these seven on I B. We haven't chosen one of them, but basically they deserve the, uh-
Parents.
Basically, it's an issue that says that, um, designing view of types of development, one is second. That was, uh, doing that, who basically, you have to be creating in the city, but, um, that, one is said in a book before that, or it is shown suggesting, designing view only cannot require approval before any permit may be issued.
That's two seventy-four.
It's not my amendment, and I'm not married to it, but I, I, um-
Nobody's gonna make it. Nobody's gonna move it.
Huh?
Yeah, and I do too.
What'd he say?
Me too, he's my constituent. He never asked me to move it.
He never asked us to move it.
Is there a motion on, on these?
Moved, second.
Okay, so Councilwoman, um, Councilman Henry moves? Councilwoman Clark, seconds.
Not my amendment, if I can vote on it, maybe vote for this.
I think you, you seconded, so you're part of it. Okay, Councilwoman Rice sing a vote, no. Councilwoman Craft?
No.
Councilman Craft, no. Councilwoman Branch? Councilwoman Branch, no. Councilwoman Clark? Councilwoman, okay, Councilwoman Clark abstains. Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Henry, yes. Councilwoman Middleton? Councilwoman Middleton, no. Councilman Mosby?
Two seventy-four.
No, Councilman Mosby, no. We have, uh, one yes, five nos, and one abstained. Motion fails. That was on T two seventy-four. Uh, T two, T, T two seventy-five, same gentleman, is there a motion on that?
No.
No, I, I, I'm not, I'm not-
Fail, fails for, fails for no motion.
T two seventy fails. Okay, um- Two seventy-five, I'm sorry.
Fail for no motion.
No motion.
They fail by, fail because of no motion. Okay, thank you. Okay, um, two seventy-three, Councilwoman Clark, it seems, on-
Craft.
Page, yeah, page eighty-one. Councilwoman, I, I just want to finish what I'm saying. T two seventy-three, which is your amendment, page eighty-one, nine through twelve, so the rest of the committee members know where we're at. Thank you.
It's actually, um, it's actually nine to eleven and twelve, but, um, it's clearly one, nine, eleven, and twelve.
Seven through twelve?
Eleven and twelve.
Okay.
I would like to move the amendment to delete the second section of a sentence. Submitted requirements is what this is under for design review are. One, this is a red act, as provided in five dash two oh one filing of this code.
Councilwoman Clark, I have a hard time here, you need to use the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
In the code, as drafted by the Planning Commission and delivered unto us, there is a statement about design, um, review. And it said that design reviews are, one, as provided in section five dash two oh one, quote, unquote, filing of this code. I am deleting, proposing to delete the final phrase of the sentence, which is, "And two, as required by the Director of Planning," I would delete, "and two, as required by the Director of Planning." This is on your sheets, your voting sheets, as well as on the sheets I've handed out of my amendments. My reason being that, that's sort of a, like, I, I think we could get everything into the basic requirements, and, um, if there are extra ones, I think the Commission would approve them to go into that document. But it's just kind of arbitrary, and I wouldn't want to be counting on what is written and come in and find out that somebody, not, not, we're not talking about people today. We're talking about people twenty years from now, or five years, or whatever we chose as the date for the new code. So I would just take that section out and say, hey, submitted requirements for design review are one, as provided in section five two oh one filing of this code, period.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do you have a motion, your motion by-
Move it.
Do I have a second? Second by Councilman Henry. Councilwoman Rice sing a vote, no. Councilman Craft?
No.
Councilman Craft, no. Councilman Branch? Councilman Branch, no. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark, yes. Councilman Henry?
Oh, really?
Councilman Henry, oh, he needs a microphone.
I'd like to explain my vote.
Go ahead.
I'm reading this amendment as, in, in the removal of the "as required by the Director of Planning", in taking out what would essentially be other duties as assigned from a list which is otherwise very explicitly spelled out. And I'm making reference to the fact that the Planning Department has pointed out on multiple occasions in this code that in an effort to reduce vagueness and the, um, the, the occasionally haphazard decisions that come with individual people's judgment, they've tried to put specifics into this code where possible. And in the case of filings for, for submission to design review, there's two pages of very specific filing information. And so my question would be, why do we still need on top of that the extra phrase, "and as required by the Director of Planning"? So I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote, uh, yes for this, and I would encourage my colleagues to think about the fact that there is no reason that I've heard made for why there'd be this need to have the planning director have this extra capability. So I vote yes.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Councilman Henry votes yes. Councilwoman Middleton? Councilwoman is no. Councilman Mosby? Councilman Mosby is no. Or Councilman Mobbs, he said yes? Okay. So we have three yes with four nos. Motion fails.
It's gonna be a bad day for me, and then it'll get better. Cause I'm gonna go tell everybody I'm gonna give all those for open government.
That was two seventy-three.
Oh, God. Oh, this is one of the things.
T two eighty-four. Okay. Do I have a motion to defer two eighty-four, because Mr. Wilsh is not here? Moved by Councilwoman Craft. Do I have a second to defer? Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor to defer, say yes.
What, I, I'm sorry. Oh, we're deferring, good. Well-
So we have a, a motion, second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor to defer, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. T two eighty-four is deferred. Thank you. T two eighty-three, um, and any of the council people? Anyone wants to move this?
Which one?
T two eighty-three, page eighty-two, line six. Yes, again, any, no, no motions? Okay, uh, T two eighty-three failed, no motion. You got that?
Well, it just disappears.
We are now on-
No, it just goes away.
Councilwoman Clark, your T two eighty-one, page eighty-two, line twenty-five.
Okay, um, excuse me one second.
Go ahead.
Well, I go to this, um, this is two eighty-one. It comes after two seventy-nine in the text. Can I, could I possibly take them in order? Not that it matters, I guess. In other words, could I start with two seventy-nine and go to two eighty-one? I don't care.
Dude, let's do it, let's stick with the system. Go with two eighty-one.
Okay, sure. It has come to my attention, through many hours of experience at the Planning Commission, that there is no appeal of Planning Commission decisions. This is highly unusual in an agency which more and more has dispositive decisions at its, um, in its toolbox. In other words, it can make final decisions on a regular basis for the disposition of properties, and there is no appeal, no appeal. The City Council has an appeal, the Zoning Board has an appeal. Okay, but I'm having, I'm making a speech because-
No, go ahead, you have the floor, Councilwoman.
My, um, my predecessor, Bob Douglas, the great late, once said to me, if you don't have the votes, make a speech. So at least people know what I'm losing about. But I will move to defer both of the, I will move to defer two eighty-one until we, wait a minute, why am I deferring this thing? Wait a minute. Two eighty-one is the one where we need good language on the second. Two eighty-one needs that same language we need. They both do, so I will defer to eighty-one, and I will defer to seventy-nine.
Okay, so you're gonna defer to eighty-one and two seventy-nine? Okay, do I have a second on?
Second.
Of both, okay. Second by Councilwoman Middleton? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Both two eighty-one and two seventy-nine is deferred.
I, we shall return, and we, we're looking for the right, let-
Okay. We are, uh, we are now on T two eighty-two. That's just Planning Department. We need clarification. Would you like to defer that, Council, I mean, uh?
Uh, it was to add a simple sentence, "Subject to Planning Commission procedural rules that may not be necessary," as, you know, maybe a law department might consider that redundant if you, the Planning Commission has rules, so, but that was the, the way they voted that amendment, so. To just make it clear that everything they do is subject to their rules, so. We can defer, yeah.
You defer?
What, which one?
Well, I'm trying to find out.
Uh, we'll withdraw it, it's redundant.
You withdraw?
Yeah.
Still need a motion.
Motion to withdraw.
Motion by Councilman Craft, second by Councilwoman Middleton, correct? All those in favor of two eighty-two being withdrawn, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. Two eighty-two is withdrawn. We are now on T, Councilwoman Clark, on T two seven seven, page eighty-two, line thirty-one to thirty-two.
This honorable committee has already defeated the notion of adopting the manuals for, for that, in, uh, the landscape manual, but letting it be a law without adopting it, and so I am withdrawing.
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilwoman Clark to withdraw, second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor of two, T two seventy-seven withdrawn, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. T two seven seven is withdrawn. We are-
Sharon, it's typo, can you vote?
Now, on-
T two eighty-five, I think we can withdraw.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, sorry. Let me read this. T two eighty-five is, uh, page eighty-three, line five, Planning Department.
I, I think we can withdraw. It's actually two items, one, which is a typo, which I believe is covered under technical, two eighty-six.
Councilwoman, can she, can she finish?
And the second, uh, the is, was covered by Councilman Henry's motion, uh, in better language to deal with the, um, preservation districts.
So you're withdrawing?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to withdraw? Moved by Councilman Henry, do I have a second? Second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor to withdraw, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. T two eighty-five is withdrawn.
Two eighty-six is a technical.
Huh?
Two eighty-six is a technical.
Two eighty-six is a technical. Yeah, it's a typo.
It's, I would like, yes, I'd like to move it.
Second.
Call the question.
To, to what? I'm sorry. You move it to withdraw?
Call the question.
Councilwoman, let me start over, so-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Two eighty-six is your, is your amendment. Is that what we want to write down, please? It's two eighty-six.
Yes, sir.
And your amendment is, it is a typo, which is technical.
It's a typo.
And, and then you have another one, is that number two?
Uh, two eighty-seven is been withdrawn in type, in print.
Okay, so you, you're moving to withdraw?
I'm moving to, no, I'm moving to approve, correcting the typo.
Okay, alright. Okay, technical. Okay. Who's second? Second, all those in favor, say aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Motion is carried.
Mr. Chairman, I move to withdraw, six forty-two.
Thank you, that was fun.
Okay. Do I have a second for withdrawal? Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor to withdraw, say aye. Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. T six forty-two is withdrawn. We now have Councilwoman Clark, it's T two eighty-nine, page eighty-four, line twenty-five. Page eighty-nine.
Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. Um, T two eighty-nine, page eighty-four, line twenty-five. Basically, uh, the landscape review manual must provide for a review process that. And then there's a list of things. And, uh, I have added a fourth thing. And the fourth thing that would be new language is, um, ensures public notice and permits public attendance as part of the review process. I would like to move that as one of the, um, excuse me, one of- one of the review process procedures.
Okay, do you...
Public, it's to let people in and to, um, and to give public notice that these processes are occurring.
Okay, thank you, do I have a second? Do I have a second? No second? No motion?
Okay.
Fails, that's 289. We are now, uh, Councilwoman Clark, on T 288, your amendment, page eighty-four, lines thirty and thirty-one.
Adds, adds the word fa, um, excuse me. Two eighty-eight. Landscape manual is required. Approval prerequisite to getting a permit. Landscape review approval is required before, and I, I just took out any and said permits may be issued for phases of development. It's, it's sort of like grammatical and technical, it doesn't change anything. I'd like to move it.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Henry. Councilman Rice Singer votes no, Councilman Craft?
No.
Councilman Craft, no, Councilman Branch?
He's not here.
Councilman Branch is absent, Councilwoman Clark?
Oh, yes.
Councilwoman Clark is yes, Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Henry is yes, Councilwoman Middleton? Councilwoman Middleton is no, Councilman Mosby? Councilman Mosby is no. We have two yes with four no and one absent, motion fails on T 288.
I know.
We are now on, Councilwoman Clark, we have, um, T 290, page eighty-five, line eight. Administrative Appeal.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. This has the same aggrieved definition polit, um, problem, and I would like to defer T 290 and T 291, and I make a motion to withdraw, I mean to defer.
To defer?
To defer.
To defer.
For better language.
Move by Councilwoman Clark, second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor to defer, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, and, uh, T 290 and T 291 is deferred. We are, Councilwoman Clark, T 292, page eighty, page, page eighty-five, lines one through C three. Go ahead.
Uh, the landscape manual, um, is not going to be approved by City Council ordinance, so, and then that's connected to earlier votes, so I'm withdrawing this proposal.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a second for the call?
It's been seconded.
Second by Councilman Henry.
Well, that's it.
Councilman Rice Singer votes yes, Councilman Craft? All those in favor to withdraw, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay.
I don't.
The ayes have it. Motion to, to withdraw. We are now on, with Planning, T 437.
I think this one got filed out of order. It should be on page seventy-seven, a simple insert in four two oh three, where line thirteen, it says that a list of, uh, subject to site plan review, one of them is conditional uses, and the Planning Commission found that some conditional uses don't involve a site, they're just interior to a building. So they voted to add a phrase after conditional use, except when accommodated in an existing structure. So in other words, site plan review is required for a gas station or that sort of conditional use. But when you have a conditional use that's all interior, that would not be subject to site plan review. And so that was their phrase to be added on line thirteen. Line thirteen of page seventy-seven.
Oh, wow.
Ms. Feinberg?
I, this got out of order, I'm not sure how, you know...
If there's a motion, unless the committee disagrees, if there's a motion, I mean, regards to planning, and we need information, I'd appreciate it if we could get that from the Planning Department before, you know...
Okay.
Because, for us to be able to read, Councilman? Anybody want to make a motion?
I'm, I'm, I'm trying to line it up right now.
What, what page is it?
It would be...
Page seventy-seven, line thirteen, and it would... It said, except when the conditional use can be accommodated in an existing structure.
Yeah, we had this from the hearing. From the orig, when we did the hearings on these chapters.
Yes, it was, it was submitted then. It just got out of order on this spreadsheet.
Second.
Move by Councilman Henry. Second by Councilwoman Clark. Councilman Rice Singer votes yes, Councilman Craft?
Yes.
Councilman Craft, yes. Councilwoman Branch is absent. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark is yes, Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Henry is yes, Councilwoman Middleton? Councilwoman Middleton is yes, Councilman Mosby?
Yes.
Councilman Mosby, yes. We have six yes with one absent, motion passed.
God. I know. Stab at me.
Okay. We are now on Title V. Okay, we're now on Title V. Okay, Councilwoman Clark, are you ready? Councilwoman Clark, are you ready?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
I'm not on the, I'm not... I'm not at the beginning.
Okay, we are on Title V with, um, Title V, T 293, which is the Council President's amendments. Do I have a motion to move, Councilman Craft, you want to?
Yes, these are the President's amendments, which we had talked about many times, 293, 294, and 95. I'd move the President's amendments at this time.
Okay, move by Councilwoman, Councilman Craft, second by Councilwoman Middleton. Councilwoman, what?
Right, I moved all three of them.
Okay. Well, Middleton already seconded, so I'm ready for the vote. We are, we are moving, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Clark, I'm going to explain to you now. We are moving amendments 293, 294, and 295, which was moved by Councilman Craft, and second by Councilwoman Middleton. So we're ready for the vote, and that was on page eighty-six. Councilman Rice Singer votes yes, Councilman Craft?
Yes.
Councilman Craft, yes, Councilman Branch is absent. Councilwoman Clark? Councilwoman Clark is yes, Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Henry is yes, Councilwoman Middleton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Middleton is yes, Councilman Mosby? Councilman Mosby is yes. We have six yes with one absent. Those three, T 293, T 294, and T 295 pass. We're now on, uh, T 708, which is planning.
We withdraw and defer to the President's amendments, 708, as, in addition to 712.
Okay, thank you. Move by Councilman Craft, second by Councilman Henry, all those in favor to withdraw, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay, the ayes have it. Motion passes to withdraw on T 708. We are now, um, on T 643.
I move to defer.
Okay, move by Councilman Craft, second by Councilwoman Clark, all those... Councilman Henry, you defer, okay, thank you. Councilman Henry, seconds for deferred, all those in favor to defer, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Okay, so you... We need some more language, yeah. Yes, that's...
All right.
I should have said that, that's my error, okay. So you...
I'll vote to defer all the land.
Okay, okay, thank you. T 643 is deferred. The move to deferred, we now have, um, T 712, which is planning.
Withdraw to defer to the President's language.
Moved by Councilman Henry, second by Councilwoman Clark. All those in favor to withdraw, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay, the ayes have it, T 712 is withdrawn. Now we have, um, T 299, which is the President's, that's page eighty-eight. Line twelve. Okay, moved by Councilman Henry, do I have a second? Second by Councilman Craft. Councilman Rice Singer votes yes, Councilman Craft?
Yes.
Councilman Craft, yes, Councilwoman Branch is absent. Councilwoman Clark? Councilwoman Clark is yes, Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Henry is yes, Councilwoman Middleton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Middleton is yes, Councilman Mosby? Councilman Mosby is yes. We have six yes with one absent. So T 299 passes. We are now on, uh... T, it's Councilwoman Clark, T 644, page eighty-eight, line twenty-three, Councilman.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, members of... Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. This, 644, is a, basically, a, an amendment which requires that, like the Zoning Board, like the City Council, the Planning Commission, um, must publicly post here, for here, to indicate dispositive hearings, to indicate when they are about to have a hearing on a land issue in which they make the final decision. So, for example, a development proposal, a plan, where their ruling i- is the, um, ability to then go get a permit, or a subdivision where their ruling is final, et cetera. So not every time they have a hearing to, to make a recommendation to some agency or to the City Council. It's very important to my constituents. Right now, it's in the rules and regulations of planning, but they can be and are waived. And, um, so, just like other peo, other agencies, including ourselves, that makes final land use decisions, it should be legally required that postings, um, are done. And that's what these amendments are, and, Mr. Chairman, somewhere there is a, um, follow-up amendment. We'll get to it, but that will be where, um, I'd be happy to oblige the ten-day posting instead of the fifteen.
Thank you, do I have a second, do I have a question? Councilman Henry?
Thank you, actually, this is a question for the Law Department, because I, I didn't realize until, um, just, just now that that was not already in the law, and that it was something that was just in the rules, and the, the commission could waive it at this point. Would, state law does not require posting and, and notice?
I'm not, I'm not sure, I'd have to look into that one for you, I'm, on, in this particular type of action, I'm not sure what the requirement is.
I mean, what...
What number are we on?
We're on T 644.
Page eighty-eight, line twenty-two.
Yeah, and I'm, I don't even see that there's... Yeah, that's what I was confused about as well. It, it seems to me that this section doesn't contemplate a hearing on anything.
You got the, are you on the right pa, you're on the right page? T 644, page eighty-eight, line twenty-two.
Reapplication waiting period.
This section talks about applications being withdrawn.
I, I saw that, and I, I have the wrong, so, I have the wrong...
Okay, you're good, go ahead. Okay.
Oh, that's, I thought, it's just long, I thought it was the one that, um... Okay, let me just tell you what this does.
It's an application process, go ahead.
Yep. So, if you go to the Zoning Board and you make a proposal about, for example, putting a single-family house in a, in a side yard, and you, um, and you go there, and you get turned down for your proposal for a variance conditional use, you may not come back to the Zoning Board with a substantially similar proposal for one year. Now, right now, people come back, and a decision is made somewhere that it is a substantial difference or not from the original proposal, like, is it really the same proposal, except you have a peaked roof instead of a flat roof, something like that? And then, a decision is made, and then, a decision is made to let them have the variance. This amendment requires notice to interested parties who have been involved on both sides of this issue to be advised before it's decided by the Zoning Board that this is, um, okay, it's substantially different, and so they'll allow it before a year is up. And in fact, they don't find out about it until there's a hearing. So, what this does is try to say, look, when you get, within a year, you get a proposal, and they say, we're coming back because this is a substantially different proposal, then if parties of interest who've been at the hearing argue against that, you have to have a hearing to decide whether or not it really is different. And if they decide that it really is different, you have to have a public hearing with all the normal posting about the new proposal. So, that's what this language does.
Do we have a second? Second, Councilman Henry has a question to the motion. Go ahead, Councilman Henry.
So, again, I'm going to ask the Law Department, although this might be a more straightforward question to ask the Law Department. If somebody re, if somebody is denied by the zoning board.
Yeah.
If they're denied, and then they submit a new proposal that they say is substantially different, such that the zoning board is going to rule on it, wouldn't the, wouldn't the very premise require that it be posted and advertised, just like a new proposal?
What?
I think the question, if I understand it correctly, is that when a new application is submitted before the year has expired, because it's a substantially different project, that initially goes to the zoning administrator. So, and then, that decision can be reviewed in the same way that any decision of the zoning administrator is reviewed. Right, he decides whether or not it's appropriate to be reheard.
But even if he decides that it should be heard, even if he agrees it's substantially different, it would still have to be posted, just as if it were a brand-new.
Right, that's correct.
But that, but what, so the substantial difference is that you wouldn't automatically contact the people who had been involved in the first iteration of the hearing.
Unless they were the same people.
It would just be treated as a new.
Right.
It would be treated as a new incident, a new, a new hearing, and so you wouldn't necessarily invite people from the previous iteration. So that's the, that's the difference.
Council, hold, Councilwoman Clark. Let's, just let me say this. When, when one of the, when one of our colleagues is on the microphone, okay, if he asks a question, this is being recorded, so when you interject, you really, it's all mumbled up, so you got, you need to give the courtesy to the counterperson that's asking the, that's using the microphone and has the floor. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for that. I was just excited to respond and forgot where I was.
Thank you. So, okay.
You don't need two and three. You just need, you just need to make sure that they go notify people from the other side, because they're going to have to advertise.
Okay, so.
Anyway.
I'm not sure that that's the case in this case. Actually, to be honest with you, I don't know, but that is the case.
So, Ca.
My second stands.
Okay, so, time for a vote. Councilman Rice Singer votes no. Councilman Craft?
No.
Councilman Craft, no. Councilman Branch? Councilman Branch?
No.
No? Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark, yes. Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Henry, yes. Councilwoman Middleton? Councilwoman Middleton, yes. Councilman Mosby?
She said no.
She said no.
Oh, she said, who said? Council, I'm sorry. Councilwoman Middleton is no. Councilman Mosby?
And I can't even remember which one I'm on.
Councilman Mosby is no. So we have two yes with five noes. Motion fails.
I'm sorry, what?
So, now, we are on. T 297. This is a Council President's Amendment. T 297. Do I have a motion to move the President's?
Mr. Chairman, I move President's Amendments 297 and 298.
Where are we?
Okay, you moved, who seconded? Councilman Henry seconded it. Councilwoman Rice Singer votes yes. Councilman Craft?
Yes.
Councilman Craft, yes. Councilman Branch?
Yes.
Councilwoman Branch is yes. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark is yes. Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Henry is yes. Councilwoman Middleton?
88.
Councilwoman Middleton is yes. Councilman Mosby? Okay, we have seven yes. Two, T 297, T 298 passes. Motion passes. T 713, the Planning Department.
Yes, it is to insert on page 89, line 10, as noted in the chart, after the word "height and bulk signage, parking, and loading," to make clear that those can be subject to variances.
Okay, moved by Councilman Henry. Do I have a second? Seconded by Councilman Craft. Councilman Rice Singer votes yes. Councilman Craft?
Yes.
Councilman Craft is yes. Councilman Branch?
Yes.
Councilman Branch is yes. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark is yes. Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Henry is yes. Councilwoman Middleton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Middleton is yes. Councilman Mosby?
Yes.
Councilman Mosby is yes. We have seven yes. Motion passes. We are now on.
Mr. Chairman, I move to defer T 302 on behalf of the President.
Do you have a second? Second, second by Councilman Henry. All those to defer T 302 say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. T 302 is deferred. We are now on T 301, which is the President's Amendment.
Mr. Chairman, I move the President's Amendments, T 301, 300, 303, 305, and 304.
Okay. All right, so you moved T 301, right?
Yes.
T 300?
Yes.
T 303?
Yes.
T 305?
Yes.
And T 304?
Yes.
Seconded by Councilwoman Middleton. Councilwoman Rice Singer votes yes. Councilman Craft?
Yes.
Councilman Craft is yes. Councilwoman Branch? Councilwoman Branch is yes. Councilwoman Clark? Councilwoman Clark?
Abstain.
Abstain.
Win it, win it, win it.
Want all of them? Yeah, okay. That's the motion on three of them, yeah. Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Say yes. Councilman Henry is yes. Councilwoman Middleton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Middleton is yes. Councilman Mosby? Councilman Mosby is.
I'd like to change my vote to yes, please.
Councilwoman Clark votes yes, from abstaining. So we now have.
I have read these amendments.
Seven yes, and.
But thank you.
301, 300, 303, 305, 304 passes. We're now on, Councilwoman Clark, this is T 306, page 93, line 10. Exploration of Approval, 5309. Councilwoman Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the committee. Variances are. Changes that are sought, for example, at the zoning board, when, how, that had to do with a number of issues, including setback requirements for properties and the like. Again, the, if I can just. So, I have an amendment for an extension. Here's what happens. A variance gets approved at the zoning board. This is our district, 3400 Roland Avenue. It gets approved at our district, at the zoning board, and then it expires at the end of a year by operation of law. That's not my amendment. That's the law now, and that's the law that is proposed by the Planning Commission draft of this legislation. Then, here are my amendments, because what happens is, when the year is up, it's not required that anyone gets noticed that the year is up and then it's terminated. A developer can go to the city and begin to, and get an extension from the board, no one knows it, for another year. Basically, what's important is that all these years have to come to a point where the public knows what is happening here, because the public in the law hears that after a year, the zoning board, after a year, your conditional and variances approved by the board are no longer apply. So, my amendments would say that the Board of Municipal Appeals may grant an extension of this period, and I would add, for a maximum of one year from the date of the original conditional use approval. Oh, wait a minute. This is the var, is this the variances? I'm sorry. What are the, this is, it's the same thing. This is 306. Sorry, I'm sorry. I got ahead of myself, and I need to go back if you don't mind.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
It's the same story.
It's 307, is that a pair? Is that the same as 306?
They're all related. Oh, here I am, okay. These are variances. So basically, but it's the same, that I, it's everything that I just said. So, my amendment in this case would say. In general, on a writ, now, this is a, this is a variance. It's been granted, the year is up, it should be, it's void. Now, the, it says in the text that is recommended from the Planning Commission, the Board of Municipal Appeals may grant an extension of this period for both minor and major variances on written application and for good cause shown without notice or hearing. I, my amendment deletes that sentence and replaces it with the following. In general, on a written showing by the applicant of reasonable cause, the board may authorize an extension of no more than one year from the date of the original variance approval. If the original permit or authorization was opposed, parties of record at the prior proceedings must be notified in advance of the extension appeal, and if requested by any such parties, the board must hold a public hearing on the extension appeal, no sooner than 15 days after these parties of interest have been notified of the hearing date. Limitations. No more than the original one-year extension, so now we're at two years, may be granted without a public hearing, adhering to standard application notice and posting requirements. In other words, you get an, you get one extension, you get two ye, a total of two years at the most, after that, you got to post and start all over again. We know what happens, because it happened in a district that is across the street from me and in the 7th, and it's not unusual.
Okay.
So, I would like to move these amendments.
Seconded by Councilwoman Middleton?
Yes.
Council. Before you, careful, you got 306 and 307. You want to move both of them?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So it's 306 and 307. Moved by Councilwoman Clark, seconded by Middleton. Councilman Craft has a.
I just have a question, Councilwoman, on, and I support these, I'm just, I have a question, when you say, and I'm looking at 306, okay?
I mean, they're spread across it. I have what it says.
No, I mean.
He has a question.
I have a question.
Okay.
Okay? It says, if the original permit or authorization was opposed, parties of record at the prior proceedings. Do you mean the parties, or do you mean people who sign in at the prior proceeding?
I mean by that, people who signed, who were there, signed in or gave testimony and/or testified, people who showed up, and can be evidenced by having signed in that they did show up, and people who, you know, on both sides, who were there on both sides and who submitted testimony or spoke or whatever.
Because there's a difference between parties of record and those who attend.
I know you're going to vote against this.
No, 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 I'm going to.
But I'll take your suggestion.
I just.
Do you have a better word or phrase?
The, can I have just one minute?
Yeah, go ahead, Council.
Okay.
This is not the same as that, the prior need for wording. This is, I don't believe at all.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. They are on the record of that.
I'm just trying to think of the, of a phrase. If, if the original permit or authorization was opposed, then those who.
Why, so kill me one.
Signed in as attending, those who signed in as attending the prior proceeding?
Yes.
Okay.
So they were, they were there.
Right.
Or, I mean, they signed in, they submitted written material.
Would you say those who signed in or testified?
Or submitted written testimony.
Okay. Let's get, let's get a, let's get a sentence here. So we have the phrase that we can give to the Councilwoman as a friendly amendment.
A friendly amendment?
We're just getting the language. They're working on language right now.
Quest, is, is your concern that the term "parties of record" is a term of art that means something in particular?
Yes.
What, and what does "parties of record" mean?
The parties of record would be the person who is the applicant.
Right.
Is the party of record.
Right, so they're, the potential, the potential opponent would not count as.
They may not be a party of record.
Yeah, that's his concern. So, so if the sentence, if the sentence read, if the original permit or authorization was opposed, all those who signed in or submitted written testimony at the prior proceedings must be. Well, but nobody, if you testified, you had to have signed in. Not necessary. Fair enough, fair, okay, good point. So, so all, but if, oh, but if you only testified and you didn't sign in, then the board may not know how to reach you, because if you testified without signing in.
Right.
But if you, but if you provided written testimony, then you have.
Right.
An address, and if you signed in, you had an address.
Then, okay, if the original permit or authorization was opposed, the, the parties. Those.
Signed in.
Who signed in.
Or offered written testimony, or submitted written testimony.
Who signed in or submitted written testimony. Right, who submitted written testimony, I think we can just say submitted written testimony, at the prior proceedings, must be notified. So I would offer that as a friendly amendment, Councilwoman Clark.
I will accept it.
You win the second.
Second.
Yes, second.
So moved by Clark, seconded by Councilwoman Middleton. To the vote, Councilwoman Rice Singer votes yes. Councilman Craft?
Yes.
Councilman Craft, yes. Councilman Branch? Councilwoman Branch is yes. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark is yes. Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Henry, yes. Councilwoman Middleton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Middleton, yes. Councilman Mosby? Councilman Mosby, yes. It passes, text, motion, when, T 306 or 307 passes.
I'm, but you're voting like what you think.
So.
Hey, thank you, everybody. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, let's, let's go. Okay, let's, let's go to.
It was such a lovely moment.
T 662. T 662, warrant T 662.
Motion to adjourn. That, that, when it is? This is 306 and 307.
Yeah, we're, we're now, Council, we're now on T 662.
Well, okay, I just want to make sure we got what we got. It might be the last thing for me today. Maybe in my life.
Okay. Well, you can celebrate after this.
I'm not celebrating.
So is anyone want to, anybody making a motion on T 662?
No, you know, um, I have, excuse me, hold it. Um, that was on page ninety, ninety-three, and then on page.
It's a table amendment.
No, I don't have, I have, I have more, but it's not on page ninety-three, it's on ninety-seven.
What do you want to do? It's a table.
Somebody wants to bring it up when they get it.
I'm sorry.
So, there's no motion on this?
Where, on what?
T 662.
It is a table amendment.
It is a table amendment?
Unclear.
So it should be a table.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. Is it mine?
No, no.
Oh. Oh, it's been raised. It's a table, it's, it's this the one that keeps cropping up? Where is it?
It's on first.
What does it say? Somebody.
So we can move on. Anyone gonna move on this, make a motion on this?
Well, no, this is, I, I would like to defer to the tables for this.
Okay, all right. Do we gotta make a motion? Okay, all right. Thank you, Councilwoman. No motion?
Do I need a motion or?
No. We are now on, we are now on, uh, T 312, which is the President's Amendment. T 312.
God, I'm sorry. 312.
And we do 312.
Yeah.
I, I gotta.
30.
30.
What about? Do I have, are you gonna move that?
Yeah. That'd be good.
So T 312, President's Amendment, do I have a motion to move?
Motion.
Moved by Councilwoman Milton, who's second?
Second.
Councilman Mosby. Councilwoman Rice, second votes, yes. Councilman Kraft is absent. Councilman Branch?
Yes.
Councilman Branch is yes. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark is yes. Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Henry is yes. Councilwoman Middleton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Middleton is yes. Councilman Mosby?
Yes.
Councilman Mosby, yes. We have six yes with one absent.
Motion to move T 13, 313 through 315. That's actually, I think I missed.
So we have 311. Go ahead.
If, if we could move 309 numerically through 316, 16.
Okay, so we're, your motion is 309, 310, 311, 312, 313, 14, 15, 16.
I, I raise this issue partially because a number of these are renumbering sections because of other ones, and if we just do them as a package, it'll make more sense.
Okay, thank you. Do I have motion by Councilman Henry? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Mosby. Councilman Rice, second votes, yes. Councilman Kraft?
Yes.
Councilman Kraft votes, yes. Councilman Branch?
Yes.
Councilman Branch votes, yes. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark is yes. Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Henry is, yep. Councilwoman Middleton?
Yep.
Yep. Councilman Mosby?
Yes.
Councilman Mosby, yep. We have seven yes, and we have, uh, 309, 310, 311, 313, 314, 315, and 316 passes. Motion passes. We are now on T 6, we are now on T 661, which is the Planning Department.
Yes, we withdraw. It's covered by the President's Amendments as well as 707, if you want to take those both at the bottom of the page.
Motion is moved to withdraw. Who made the motion? Henry, who seconds?
Second for both of those numbers.
Second by Councilwoman Kraft.
Uh, Clark.
Clark?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Clark?
661.
661 and 707.
At 6, T 661, and what's the other one?
707.
707.
707. Okay. Um, all those in favor to withdraw, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. And T 661 and T 707 is withdrawn.
Okay, here I go with conditional.
Mr. Chairman, I would move President's Amendments, T 317, 318, 319, 320, 321, and 322.
Second. Okay. Moved by Councilman Kraft, second by Councilman Henry. This is on text 317, 318, 319, 320, 321, and 322. We're taking a vote. Councilman Rice, second votes, yes. Councilman Kraft?
Yes.
Councilman Kraft is yes. Councilman Branch?
Yes.
Councilman Branch is yes. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark is yes. Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Henry is yes. Councilwoman Middleton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Middleton is yes. Councilman Mosby?
Yes.
Councilman Mosby is yes. We have seven yes. Those motions on those texts pass. We are now on.
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Point of sequence.
Where we have?
I, I, Mr. Chairman.
Use the microphone, Councilwoman.
Mr. Chairman, I have an amendment that, and this title also, that didn't make it onto the list, but was on my list submitted to the committee. It has to do with conditional uses. It follows the same rationale as the one that we just discussed, thank you, on variances. And it is on page, so I call it T XXX, and it's on page ninety-seven, lines one to seven. So I, I don't want it to go any further out of order if we could consider it.
Thank you.
It is on your, it is on the sheets that I handed out on, on chapter, on Title V. It's the same idea that we just discussed about variances. Conditional uses, um, whoa. If you go to the zoning board and you get a conditional use, if you don't exercise it, within one year from the date they send you the letter of approval, it expires. And unless you have a, unless by that time you have a building permit, or you've begun construction, or if it's a use, like, I guess, outdoor tables or something, that you've begun the use. Otherwise, if, if you've done all, one of those things, then you're okay. But if you haven't, it expires. And so I read you already the, the draft from the Planning Commission that says that the Board of Municipal Appeals can go ahead and extend for a year without a hearing or notice or anything. Here's my, I deleted that section and substituted the following. "The Board of Municipal and Zoning Appeals may grant an extension of this period for a maximum of one year from the date of the original conditional use, at the end of that, on written application and for good cause shown." I delete just because I hate seeing these words, "without notice or hearing." It doesn't say, it doesn't say you have to have a hearing, but I just don't like to say, I don't like that language. "At the end of that extended year, the property reverts to its underlying zoning designation by operation of law, unless, within that second year, you got a building permit, you've started alterations on your structure, or the use has finally begun." Okay. So basically, if any, and then, it goes on. "If any conditional use is discontinued for a continuous period of two years," now, this is in current law, I take out or more, "from the date of original approval," just to specify, "the conditional use approval automatically lapses and is void, and the property permanently reverts to its underlying zoning by operation of law." I made a mistake here. I'm not trying to delete the last sentence. The last sentence from the Planning Commission still remains. A new application and authorization is required before the conditional use may be reestablished. Finally, if disapproving the application as not, oh, that's a different thing. That's a different thing. Sorry. Um, wrong page. That's what it is. That's it. I'd like to move, basically, you can have two years, but after that, it's over. You gotta go out, post your property, and start all over again. Here comes, Stephanie, I don't think I have the right page in the right place. Or maybe I do. Ah, I see it. I skipped a page.
Can we defer this to the language to get the language straight?
Because we're kind of confused on this. I mean, it just came to us. So, Councilwoman, could we, could you defer this and we come back at the next voting session? Or when you get it put together?
Is there some?
No, no, it's just that we, reading this, I mean, the language is, I'm just asking, what the, what the committee's asking, if you would just, as a courtesy, defer it, bring it back.
As courtesy to the committee, I, I will defer it. I would like to be part of the conversation.
Yes, yes. Okay. Okay, so, a motion is made to defer T XXX. And Councilwoman Henry seconds it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
I am so disliked.
So T XXX is deferred. We are now on T, is that T 710? Am I correct?
Oh, good job.
Planning. You're making them, okay. Do I have a motion to withdraw, T 710?
Second.
So moved by Councilman Kraft, second by Councilman Mosby. All those in favor to withdraw, T 710, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. T 710 is withdrawing.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. Councilman Kraft, we want T 324. Go ahead.
Chairman, I move T 324, T 323, T 645, T 603.
For the President's.
T 326, T 325, T 327, T 329, T 331, T 330, and T 604. They're all the President's remaining amendments.
Can you repeat that, please?
Yes, I will go, I will do it one more time. Right. T 324, T 323, T 645, T 603, T 326, T 325, T 327, T 329, T 331, T 330, and T 604.
Okay. Moved by Councilman Kraft, second by Councilman Henry. Councilman Rice, second votes, yes. Councilman Kraft?
Yes.
Councilman Kraft is yes. Councilman Branch is absent. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark is yes. Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Henry is yes. Councilwoman Middleton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Middleton is yes. Councilman Mosby?
Yes.
Councilman Mosby is yes. Motion's passed on T 324, 323, 645, 603, 326, 325, 327, 329, 331, 330, and 604. So now, we see S 324.
Move withdrawn.
Okay, do I have a motion to withdraw?
Move.
Moved by Councilman Henry?
Second.
Second by Councilman Kraft. All those in favor to withdraw, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it.
Oh.
T 711 is withdrawn. Uh, we are now on.
Move to defer 328.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman, Councilwoman, uh, Clark?
Age is on.
Uh.
Ah.
Yeah, we're not doing that.
He doesn't have the language. He always has it. Okay, I got it.
Okay. So Councilman Henry moves to defer. Councilwoman Clark, second. All those in favor to defer, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. And T 328 is deferred. Do we have, uh, T 332? This is from Neighborhood Alliance. Do we have a motion on that? Or you want to defer?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to defer it on behalf of my constituents so that we can get some.
Language? Okay.
I think she's looking for more signs.
Okay.
Advertizing of ending development. Can I get a second?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor to defer, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. T 332 is deferred. Councilwoman Clark?
I know.
T 35. Is that two, T 23, T 335? Councilwoman Clark and T 336, is that a pair?
Um, could we defer this till tomorrow, please, so I'll make sure I find.
So you want to defer? Okay.
I'd like to take it up tomorrow at the.
Yeah, sure, sure. So, Councilwoman Clark moves to defer. I got a second. Second by Councilman Henry. All those in favor to defer, T 335 and T 336, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The ayes have it. And T 335 and T 336 is deferred.
There were three, I, yeah, that, that way I can also fix the 10 to, 15 to 10.
The consensus list.
We have, um, Councilwoman Clark, you have?
Oh, sorry.
Which, TT 37, page 107, line?
337 is part of this whole thing. It's all the same.
Yeah.
It's all the required posting.
Page 107, line seven?
I'm sorry, three, um.
T 337.
You're deferring that one, too?
I don't trust any, I trust you all right now, but we deferred these, and then we're talking about these?
Yeah.
Yeah, 337, right. Um, Mr. Chair, this is all the same, so I'd like to defer T, um, T 337, and also T 344, which is further down, um, and it's.
What number, okay, you, you said T 37, you want the T 337 deferred? You want to go down to?
Yeah, it's the same, I want that for tomorrow, if we could defer until tomorrow, so I can get these all together. And then there's one more piece that's spread out, that's all part of the same amendment on our sheets, and that is T 344. That's where it's, it enumerates the posting requirements, how many days.
Okay. Let's, instead of moving defer, we're gonna go in recess, and you can bring it back tomorrow.
Okay, but I need, I'd like to bring it back tomorrow.
Okay, good.
I don't want to get out of this chapter.
Yeah, no, so we'll, we'll recess, but before we recess, Councilman Kraft, what do you have?
Um, on page one oh four, from the April, from the April eighth work session, we had a consensus on line thirty-one, to change the word seek to obtain. Director of Planning must obtain an opinion rather than seek an opinion. Move to change the word from seek to obtain, in accordance with our consensus from April eighth.
Where is that again?
Huh? Page one oh four, line thirty-one. Or if you want to pick a weight, and to everybody sort of like, you want to wait?
We did that one.
Yeah. Second.
Yeah, we're good.
Okay, so what is that?
Chairman, thank you for voting for that one.
Right.
Line thirty-one, right?
Line thirty-one, delete, seek, insert, obtain.
So it's moved by Councilman Craft, second by Councilman Henry. Take a vote. Councilwoman Rice singer, yes. Councilman Kraft?
Yes.
Councilman Kraft, yes. Councilman Branch? Councilman Branch is absent. Councilwoman Clark? Councilwoman Clark? Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Henry, yes. Councilwoman Middleton is absent. Councilman Mosby?
Yes.
Councilman Mosby, yes. We have five yes with two absent. Motion passes. What else you have?
Okay, Mr. Chairman, on April twenty-fourth, consensus on page one oh five, lines twenty-three and twenty-four. But page one oh five, next page, lines twenty-three and twenty-four. We deleted a change in the boundaries of a zoning district. So it would say, for a zoning map amendment, other than a comprehensive rezoning, or the creation or modification of a plan unit developed, we, we, we deleted the words, a change in the boundaries of a zoning district. Right, comma.
Yes, we did. I'd like to, are you?
I move that.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Craft, second by Councilwoman Clark. Councilwoman Rice singer votes, yes. Councilman Kraft?
Yes.
Councilman Kraft is yes. Councilman Branch is absent. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark is yes. Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Henry is yes. Councilwoman Middleton is absent. Councilman Mosby?
Yes.
Councilman Mosby is yes. We have five yes with two absent. Councilman Craft? Is that it?
On the following page. One oh six, lines fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen, it's the same thing. We deleted on lines fifteen and sixteen, um, a change in the boundaries of a zoning district, and then we took out the word at least in front of two, on the same day, April twenty-fourth. I move that amendment.
Second.
Okay, moved by Councilman Craft. Second, second by Councilwoman Clark. Councilwoman Rice singer votes, yes. Councilman Kraft?
Yes.
Councilman Kraft, yes. Councilman Branch is absent. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark is yes. Councilman Henry?
Sure.
Councilman Henry is yes. Councilwoman Middleton is absent. Councilman Mosby?
Yes.
Councilman Mosby is yes. We have five yes with two absent. Motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, on page one oh seven, staying on that same date, April twenty-fourth, on line one, we deleted at least, it, because there's a duplicate. It says at least, at least, that's a technical amendment. Okay, so we just deleted that. I don't think, I think we can do that as a technical amendment, because it's just typed at least twice. Right. Um, on lines nine and ten. It was a technical, okay. On lines, line, line and ten, after the words Board of Municipal and Zoning, we inserted the word appeals there, which is make it consistent with everything else. I would move, I would move to insert the word appeals on that line.
So that's a motion?
Yes.
Do we have a second? Second by Councilwoman Clark. Councilwoman Rice singer votes, yes. Councilman Kraft?
Yes.
Councilman Kraft is yes. Councilman Branch is absent. Councilwoman Clark? Councilwoman Clark is, yes. Councilman Henry?
Aye.
Councilman Henry is yes. Councilwoman Middleton is absent. Councilman Mosby?
Yes.
Councilman Mosby is yes. We have five yes with two absent. Motion passes.
Okay, on page one oh seven, line twenty-two. On number three, the name, and we inserted address, telephone number, and email address of the applicant.
Okay, moved it?
Yes, move that.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. Which one?
Uh, twenty-two.
That is page one oh seven.
It was, we wanted to know.
Okay, um, Councilwoman Rice singer votes, yes. Councilman Kraft?
Yes.
Councilman Kraft is yes. Councilman Branch is absent. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark is yes. Councilman Henry?
Yes.
Councilman Henry is yes. Councilwoman Middleton is absent. Councilman Mosby?
Yes.
Councilman Mosby is yes. We have five yes with two absent. Motion passes.
Page one oh eight, lines fourteen and fifteen. We deleted the, the phrase by the proposed rezoning, and it just ended boundaries of the affair area affected. And then on line sixteen, we also inserted there, address, telephone number, and email address. I move that.
Second by Councilwoman Clark. Council, Councilwoman Rice singer votes, yes. Councilman Kraft?
Yes.
Councilman Branch is absent. Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clark is yes. Councilman Henry?
Yeah.
Councilman Henry is yes. Councilwoman Middleton is absent. Councilman Mosby?
Yes.
Councilman Mosby is yes. We have five yes with two absent.
And the final one is on page one oh nine. And it was, um, a duplicate, at least, and we changed ten to fifteen on that.
What line?
Line one.
Line one?
Must be posted, and we deleted the one, the duplicate at least, and we changed ten to fifteen. I move the change.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Craft, second by Councilwoman Clark. Councilwoman Rice singer votes, yes. Councilman Kraft?
Yes.
Councilman Kraft is yes. Councilman Branch is absent. Councilwoman Clark? Councilwoman Clark is yes. Councilman Henry?
Yeah.
Councilman Henry is yes. Councilwoman Middleton is absent. Councilman Mosby?
Yes.
Councilman Mosby is yes. We have five yes with two absent. Motion pass.
Mr. Chairman, that's it in, um, Title V.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yes. You need a microphone, yeah.
My, um, constituents' proposed amendment was approved, subsequent to my deferring her request. Joan, um, and, oh, I, okay, I, I'm not sure where it is, but.
Are you going to take it up tomorrow?
Yeah, we, yeah, I mean, we, we can take up not taking it up tomorrow, because it's been approved.
Okay, so you do.
And we have my, my, is that all that's remaining in five?
Yeah. Huh?
Oh.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. At next voting session, we're in Bill twelve dash zero one five to Transform Baltimore. It'll be October the seventh, three p.m. at City's Council chambers. I just want to remind everyone that the committee will hold a public hearing on a map amendment on October eighth, six p.m. at Poly Tech located fourteen hundred West Cold Spring Lane. Thank you.